Good evening, everybody. It is five thirty on Tuesday, the seventh of November. We will call the city council meeting for the city of Shoto to order. Those in attendance will rise and pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Here tonight in house, we've got Councilman Burge, Councilwoman McCartney Duty, Councilman Howard, Clerk Fromm Felder, Finance Officer, sorry, Fromm Felder, myself, and in the crowd, we have Melody, Phil Spektold, Ally, Ann Carlson, and I really don't know your two names. That's why I use your aliases. I'm a simple man. What can I say? So there's six, six in the, in the public setting here tonight. First item tonight would be the approval of the minutes from twenty-four October.
I'm moved.
I have a motion from Councilman Merja and a second from Councilman McCartney Duty. If someone were to read my shorthand and see McD, there you went. What is he doing? Corrections additions. Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minute stand is approved. You leave anybody leaving the state? Other than Councilman Cacoli? Who's has left the state already? Possibly?
Probably not.
I am not leaving the state, but I will be gone Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and back Friday next week. I have to go to Billings for convention. So try not to sell the city while I'm gone, please.
Well, if we get a good press.
Yes. First item on unfinished business. This is, I would take, let's get a motion on it first.
Motion on what?
On. This would be vote on Code Red and Text My Gov. And to be honest with you, I want the motion. I want it gone. Because I know where it's going to go. I know where the vote, I know where the motion's taking it. And, but I need it gone so I can let the vendors know. Otherwise, they keep texting my gov, asking if we're gonna.
I make a motion that we do not.
I need a motion to.
Sign up for.
Okay.
You, you need a mo, you need a motion for the vote.
I need a motion to vote.
Motion to vote.
Yes.
I'll second it. Now we can discuss.
Now we can discuss it, yes. So for those, we had looked at getting Text My Gov as an alternative to the Code Red program that the county has. We also looked at Code Red from, for the city's standpoint. We had talked to the town of Fairfield and they were gonna, they were gonna come on board with us for Code Red. At this time, they had not budgeted for it and weren't sure how they wanted to deal with it. In chatting with council members, current, and you being the new, first one, new, you know, the newbie to the block, you haven't had a lot, a lot of opportunities to it. It's become apparent that it probably would be no more effective than the communication systems we're currently using between phone calls to people and Facebook and sharing things like that.
Wouldn't Code Red have also required us to use the county's dispatch system? That wa, that wasn't that one?
Nope. None of them were. But it costs us about two thousand dollars a year. The nice thing is, yeah, you could draw a circle around a part of town, hit the button, and those people in that part of town who had registered would get notification that their water might be turned off. But we can dial a lot of phone calls for two thousand bucks. So.
And undenounced to you, I actually worked extensively with Cascade County in their onboarding of Code Red. So what I know is that it's, it doesn't feel appropriate for Shoto because it's for like mass casualty events, for hurricane, for, you know, the smelter melting down. And when they did tests on it, it would blow up the whole city because people were like, what's going on? And it just says test. And so it caused more chaos than it did help.
Yeah.
In the end, they still have it on board, but every time they run a test, it's chaos.
You guys abused it for the Bears a couple of different times that I know of. It's just, I wish there was a silver bullet that we could blanket, you know, short of typing Morse code with the fire siren out there. You know.
About shooting the Bears.
To let people know something's up, but at this time, I just, I, I, it's up to you guys. I, I just don't think it's something that would benefit the city or us.
And if we have larger events, there's, you know, the, as you learned when we had flooding, there's larger systems at play in Montana. You can notify them and they will do your notification for you. So I think we have a go-to as long as we have the flip chart where whoever's here could flip and say, here's who we called to notify. I think we're fine.
Mel, what's your thoughts on this matter? From the press?
First, I think the first of all, she needs to move the press to stay with this meeting for this information out of it. I really don't because I don't know, I listed together mirrors, which she probably already done.
So but what you just said intrigued me. What do you, when something, when should we notify you? You don't want to be notified on.
Well, if it's an emergency situation.
Well, yeah, an emergency situation, water shut off, things like that. We normally do do that, but. Okay.
Anytime you think that the infrastructure that the ACANTA has, they can be contributed to get information, accurate information out to people that they want to get, then you should call.
I like that.
So a thought is maybe make some QR codes for the city Facebook page, the ACANTA Facebook, and have them on the door. And encourage so that, so that when people walk through the door, they walk up to the door, have all the contact information.
The tough part is there's still a significant number of people in this community who don't have cell phones, still have landlines.
You're right. But, but I mean.
You know, we, we're struggling to get people, as we're updating water meters, trying to get people to give us updated information and phone numbers. So.
It's, and it's an ongoing problem. I faced it at the bank. I faced it at the school.
Yeah.
You're, you're gonna dial numbers that are, that are dead, and that's, that's on the person whose number it is.
So, do we have an official emergency protocol plan for the city?
We do.
Okay. And it's easily accessible.
And it goes through DES, yeah.
Okay.
And I learned that fourteen days after blissful being mayor.
I remember that.
And I gotta say, the gals and the guys in, in Helena with DES, DEQ, those people were top-notch and I, yeah.
That's what they do every day.
It is.
Yep.
So dealing with like, Carrie Orange Meyer's husband, Kirk, and all those folks down there. So I just, I need to get this moved so we can get it off the desk. So any questions from you guys out in the public? Okay, those in favor of? How do I want to phrase this?
So you gotta say those in favor of having Code Red.
Vote, yep, that's why I gotta make sure I do this right. Those in favor of Code Red signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. I will let both parties know tomorrow where we came out at. Next item would be the approved pay request number nine for prospect construction.
Is this their final pay request?
If there's one more, it's very small. There can be the final one to prospect construction. With that, it should be, there's anything else on two, it should be very minimal.
And so where are they as far as percent of the merger?
They are done, wrapped up, substantial completion, have a couple of things that they're gonna have to deal with come spring.
So they've got a punch list for spring?
Last I, last I was, they had not gotten all the way through.
And do we hold any payment until that punch list is done?
My guess is that's what the last payment will be.
Gotcha. Okay. I guess I should have made the motion first and moved that we approved pay request number nine.
Second?
Second.
Now pretend I asked my question.
Yeah. I do know that Mike's been in contact with them. I know that Lynette's been in contact with them, or Lynette, well, Lynette at Great West and Colette has as well. Yeah. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. New business. This is just a brief discussion. There's some copies of the dog ordinances over there on Tom's desk if you'd like them. This seems to be the bad penny in everybody's political career, dealing with dogs and the ordinances. I think and you're gonna be off the hook, Councilman lame duck Councilman Howard, when it comes time to do this, but I think come spring, we, between now and the first of July, or first of April, we're gonna have some public meetings. We have to figure out what we want to do with this. We need to have some, if, if this is going to stay intact, as is, we're gonna have to do some better definitions. If it's going to be taken apart, we have to figure out what's going to be taken apart. Is it going to be trashed altogether and start from scratch? I don't know. So I would ask you guys and you in the public, to, and you in the public, to break your highlighter out and find the ambiguities, find the things that don't seem to make sense or don't seem to fit. And we'll get together, I'll get something scheduled in January, once we get through the holidays, to figure this one out. As I look at Title VII under Montana Code for Executive Powers, it says duties of the executive shall one, enforce laws, ordinances, and resolutions. So as I go to Title, dig into Title Ninety better, here it says, under ninety dash zero two authority of the city animal control officer, it says the city shall assign or designate a person or persons as city Shoto animal control officers. If we do that, what do we do with the dogs? Having them is still not an answer if I don't have a way of taking care of the dogs, dealing with the animals, and the costs associated with this. I would like to see the one bottom line, and then I'm, I'm waiting for some legal opinions back on this. I'd like to see these be civil rather than criminal. I, I think that in my brief tenure here, the majority of the dog complaints that I see on a seventy thirty basis, thirty percent are legit. Seventy percent are personality conflicts between neighbors that they just can't get along. And in lieu of that, they find some way to have the government try and fix that problem for them. So I'm, I'm torn because I literally, literally could, or whoever would be appointed an animal control officer could eat up forty plus hours a week.
Easily.
Add into it the recent uptick in cats and we have even more. So I'm, I'm out there openly asking for help from the public, from the council. Staff's got it. Tier has been working on it to figure out a way that we can either make this work better or figure out a way to pare it down so that it does work better. And if somebody wants a copy of the animal quotes for the city Shoto, you can come down to City Hall and we'll print them off for you. You can find them on our city website. It'll say city codes. It will take you off of our website and you're looking for Title, or Title Nine. And it's the first section in Title Nine talks about dogs.
Are we required to do this?
What's that?
Are we required?
Well, according to this, we are. It's an ordinance. We are supposed to enforce all ordinances on the books.
Is it required to be on the books?
No, I don't, well, that's a question we have to ask some people at Shoto because originally the people at Shoto were the ones who put it there. And this will be a contentious, contentious discussion. There are people that would rather be apprehend their children than their dogs or their pets. Because pets create a whole nother level of emotion when it comes to to people.
And I, through the very fine of other towns and cities, some of their policies are very strict and like, like after seventy-two hours, they sit down and bow. So I mean, they can be very extreme in direction.
And don't get me wrong, this is, this is not limited to horses, mules, asses, cattle, sheep, goats, chicken, ducks, turkeys, cats, and dogs. Every living brute creature, whether domestic, wild, fowl, or mammal, shall include. The only thing we don't have to worry about in Salem mix? Pigs.
Actually, not true. We don't have to worry about swine.
Swine, yeah.
Difference between swine and pigs.
Yeah.
Pigs, so the we face this with resident in town who had a pot-bellied pig.
Yeah.
And the neighbor complained that the person had a pig in town. So we went to, I looked up the definition of swine versus pig. A swine is a pig or slaughter. It's a meat pig, not a pet pig.
So.
And then the, the pig went from the house to the truck to the house. They used the litter box. It wasn't a problem. But just.
We don't even do license, we don't even provide metal licenses anymore. Yeah. We don't provide the metal license tags anymore.
We still do the licensing, but we don't have the title anymore.
In a five dollar license tag takes, costs more than five dollars in labor to get it done. It was like the old five dollar speeding tickets. It costs forty bucks to rent a five dollar speeding ticket.
And like a lot of people didn't even put a tag on it.
Yeah.
If you have cats, they're probably tearing them up.
They've still got the five dollar penalty inherent.
I know.
It should probably start at fifty.
Well, I would rather take it out of that, yeah.
Add another zero.
Yeah.
I, I would bet we only get about a third of fifty to thirty percent of the dogs in town registered, probably like five percent of the cats in town registered.
I gotta say, there's been a serious uptick in cat complaints.
And, uh, yours too.
Yeah, chickens. Chickens, urban chickens. So I would just ask, you know, this, this is not an action item. This is just something to get it out there on the plate, on plates of people and in the minds of folks. Those that complain that are always, I would like them to come way in and trust me, I know who you are. I have your mailing addresses because I have your complaint forms. Don't be surprised if you see this in the mail, asking you to comment and weigh in on it.
I'm gonna schedule a, a comment?
I will get one after the first of the year, yeah. As I get closer and know what my schedule's starting to look like in January, we'll get it done. I would like to announce that meeting. Are we gonna meet on January second? Or are we gonna push it and meet on the ninth? So those are the things I gotta, we gotta figure out as we get closer. Okay. Any other questions or discussions from, yes, Ann or Ally? From the front row?
I can stand up or can I?
Please, if you would come up. We'd like to have you on camera. No, Ann, this is Ann Carlson speaking, so go ahead, Ann.
Well, um, but I agree. I think this is a really important conversation to have. I, I walk dogs on leashes around town. A lot of big red dogs, you probably see sort of like fast food, they're born. But, um, I know, so I see lots of things. I see where there's chickens that are all over lots of people's yards and I can all come back and see a big pile of feathers the next week. So I know one of them got, got it. And I also am aware of where there have been dogs that have, you know, gotten into people's animal pets and killed their pets. And where you have growing roosters and you have, so I understand that there's a, gonna be a progress conversation. It's gonna be difficult. I guess the question I really, so I'm looking forward to participating in that in a respectful way. And also my dogs have been attacked by dogs that are vicious in town that are running around loose and that's super awesome experience. Um, so I, I'm looking forward to this. I know it's gonna be really difficult. I guess I was just wondering if you had thoughts about the process? Because I feel like the process could really support the kinds of dialogue we probably would all like to have.
Well, I believe the process is broken now, Ann, so I'm up for, I mean, I honestly think by the time we're said and done, we're reinventing a wheel of some sorts. We're gonna take a very large wheel and make it a very small wheel by the time we're done, I'm betting.
Yeah, I imagine that you are. It feels like you had a couple, I mean, maybe identifying some of the major decision points, which I think I just noticed you saying some of them, like, do we want to move things over so they are civil instead of criminal? Do you, you know, it seems like you have a couple of major decision points that could hopefully help ease the community into the conversations. And then thinking about, I don't know if you wanna, you know, do it by species or whatever, but it just seems like the way that you set the process up and the options for doing that could really be some time well spent.
Oh, yes, I agree. And it will be in depth by the time we're done.
Oh, but I mean, and also the thing too, right? If you move it over to civil and people had fines, and I don't call you actually, but, um, it feels like maybe that could help fund after a while, a part of somebody's time to help cope with some of the challenges that the cities face.
I've often thought a commission-based enforcement person might become a very wealthy person in Shoto, Montana.
It really could, absolutely.
Yeah.
But it might help though, that I think that the fact that they haven't been enforced for so long, and I guess the reasons, um, figuring out what it looks like to enforce them if they move over to civil could actually help people realize that there are expectations that will be enforced.
Well, you can bet our civil attorney, our criminal attorney, the city judge, and Keith will be involved in this process before it's all said and done. And as will I'm sure Joe Cobble from the county side of things too.
I would say, you know, having had this conversation pretty much once a year for fourteen years, the biggest problem we have is the arbitrariness of, of the definitions.
Yeah.
They're, they're very short and gray and, and so it's hard to enforce something that is that small.
But when I ask for other cities about this stuff, they're like, no, I'm not sending it to you because they're embarrassed of what theirs is too.
Well, that's what's getting rid of my mind. I was gonna say, do you have like one or two places where it's like, is this working-ish?
We have some of the smaller communities that, as Tom said, are they have police departments still, and that's part of it, and they're kill shelters. Some are forty-eight hours. Some are seventy-two hours.
Yeah.
No, that's what I mean.
And, and, and some, some are not even that long.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that wasn't where I was standing.
Well.
But that's because of the cost effectiveness of it after that, it's cheaper to do that than it is to, and
I know. You can always raise taxes to support all this. That's the easiest way to do it. Then we can hire whoever we want, as many as we.
And I would tell you.
Nobody wants to go there.
No, it'd be.
About, about a hundred bucks a resident.
It'd be a quarter of a million dollars to run an effective animal program.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, that would be helpful to hear what that means too.
Well, that means a, 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 a staff, one full-time, one part-time, a vehicle, facility, food, water, shelter, utilities, medical bills. Because you got, if you have sick dog or sick animal, it's gotta go to the vet, somebody's gotta pay for that. And if, yeah, and if it's in our care, custody, and control as an impounded animal. And the other thing, Ann, that most towners are telling me that if they have one, it turns into a drop-off place. People just drop them and go. Middle of the night. I didn't realize this little puppy is going to be a hundred and twenty pounds. It does. It's, it's gonna be one that's gonna pull a lot of people's heartstrings. Yes, Ally, or you're next. Yes.
Uh, I was just wondering, does the county have any responsibility to do this kind of stuff?
If it's a vicious dog, my contract with, with the, I can send it to Keith, to Keith, actually, I sent it to Jen. Jen takes it to Keith and it gets enforced that.
Okay, but only if it's a, like.
Vicious dog. Nuisance dog, no.
And that's, that's in our.
Well, yeah, because.
Agreement with the Sheriff's Department, isn't it?
Well, I, I don't know if it is or not, but they do handle that. If it, if it's a dog bite, it goes to the emergency room, the emergency room notifies them as well. And Austin gets notice of, of that as well as the sanitary. Phyllis?
What did you want to get the brains of the licensing? You know, I mean, but, but there'd be less people registering.
That would be my, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we're only getting twenty, thirty percent of them now. Look, those people would pay more.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I just, one of those things that I, I want the public to know that.
Anyway, you look at it, comes down to punishing the good citizens, the good animal lovers.
Yep.
Not the bad ones.
Exactly. You're punishing good dogs for the actions of bad dogs.
And add the good owners.
The bad, yeah, bad owners, yeah.
So you have to think about what you punish them.
The proper people have to, yeah.
Yeah, enforce all that.
Oh, yeah.
So a lot of money.
Yep. Consider the town of Shoto your first grade class with full of dogs. Councilman McCartney Duty.
Dogs got nothing on my kids.
Having, I see, having one in her class, I know that. Okay, if there's nothing more on dogs, well, we will keep this on the burner and it will be, uh, on an agenda in January for a public meeting.
It's a working, I would suggest a working meeting, like just separate from a council meeting.
Oh, yeah, I would. It would not be on same night as the council, no.
Okay. Good.
It'll be like on a Wednesday night where Brian brings his hamburgers from the Legion and we do it. Something like that.
Be a fundraiser as well, raise a pint, have a burger.
There you go.
Talk about dogs.
Um, Brian Coldworthy has entered the building, wearing, which hat are you wearing tonight, Brian? Chamber?
I'll, I'll say county.
Oh, he's here as the county grant administrator, flight plane administrator. So, welcome. Hopefully in January, I will have a screen at the pavilion. Which brings us to another thing, you know, we're we're gonna put a screen over there. I'm gonna use that building more for, because it's bigger and it's easier to use. We're looking at a screen that's going, like, like you have at the schools, electric ones, but we're gonna have to take it up, take it down as it comes. Because I don't want people hanging stuff on it when they're over there at weddings and other things. And we will go from there. So, uh, Kelly Richter has joined the party. You missed the dog discussion. So you wanted to, you know, yeah, if you got, I'm just saying, this is a mess.
We invited you in, your new dog, City.
Yeah, yeah. You can come up and raise your hand. No, this will be a very emotional and contentious discussion as we look at it. Um, I will get, do you have another copy of the codes over there, Tom?
No, I have your hangman on the trail.
Yeah. Councilman Howard's got it memorized. What I'm asking folks to do, Kelly, is just go through it, highlight the ambiguities, figure out what doesn't make sense, what makes sense, and things like that. We talked about some of the other communities in Montana that have these facilities and most of them are, are kill facilities, seventy, forty-eight to seventy-two hours.
Okay.
Um, a lot of the smaller towns that have them, they turn into places people drop their dog, their pets off because they don't want them.
Right.
So we've got to come up with a plan because truly what we have now is not working. And it's not just dogs, it's cats, it's chickens, things along those lines. I really haven't had no, again, knock on wood, horse complaints in the same ones yet that I've had to deal with. Tom's looking at the, rolling his eyes over. Tom's looking at the, rolling his eyes over there.
No, we have horses in, but it's been about 18 months since they've been a bone.
Um, the next item again on new business is going to be just a basic discussion on updating old ordinances. As we deal with this, there will be ordinances that have to go. We have ordinances we know that need to go. And rather than doing them one at a time, we are putting together a list because we can have one public hearing from what we're being told by state of Montana. List the ordinances, what they pertain to, and we can get them taken care of.
Instead of having a public meeting for each one.
Yeah, instead of having that, we can do it in one fell swoop. Um, I can tell you again, in January, we will have a public hearing on a new ordinance. There was an ordinance passed in the 50s, or there was a resolution passed in the 50s, but it never got cauterized. And that was a resolution that prevented the building or encroachment on city rideaways or city boulevards. Had that been on the books, it would have saved us some money and some issues on the previous thing, so we will go back. We do the ordinance or redo the resolution and get it updated and get it caught by. So. Um, public hearings, I think we will hold especially on contentious things, we'll do them at the pavilion where I have more space. Um, if you are truly bored, you want to go through some of the city codes and see what's on there that needs to come off, that let me know. We did send them to, they've gone through immunity code, immunity code has highlighted what conflicts with state code, what conflicts with federal code, and those we know we can strike. So we just have to go back through and find out what ordinances that are on the books that don't conflict, that are not worthy or being enforced and go from there like.
Or need updating.
Yeah, something like that, so. Again, I'm looking for January to be a month of meetings. Any other questions on those? Last new business item would be claims.
Pay the claim, we pay the claims.
I have a motion from Councilman Merja. And a second from Councilman McCarthy duty. Any questions on the claims? It is a large amount, but you got to remember that $800,000 of that goes to the contractor.
Yeah. All questions.
Goes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, we'll pay the bills, Tom, I will sign checks in the morning. Councilman Merja, you got anything for us?
No.
Other Southsider.
Southside's waiting for the animal discussion.
I can only imagine. Maybe, maybe we need to get a game worn involved.
No.
By the way.
Let me take his takeaway so quick.
I had my, I had Terriann out with me hunting, we ran across her husband. We're having a conversation, the minute I told Terriann who he was, she just knuckle down, turned, looked out the other window. This is all, it was kind of a good one. Councilman Howard. Life in the fire department, life in the real world?
Fire department's going good. Much the real world, do you want to get into?
Whatever's out there.
That was Mike's issue.
Mike's issue is being cleared up, um, I, we don't have the new, we don't have the new test back yet.
So, is that anything that we're worried about?
At the time being, I don't believe it is, we had a bad water test. We had a.
We still haven't gotten it.
Failed the back T test, so we had to re, re, rerun it a bunch, they reran seven new tests on Monday. We found out Friday afternoon. Um, Mike spent, Mike was supposed to be gone this weekend, Mike spent the weekend home working on the system and flushing systems and things like that, so we'll see. Um, what DEQ comes back and says, I would venture to guess, we'll end up having an ad in the paper that said we failed a back T test for the city of Choto. First one in Mike's career. It was news for me. Um, didn't, didn't sit well and.
I don't know if it's.
We, yeah.
Close to a health issue.
No.
It, it's just we're cranking up chlorine and injection site, flushing it out through the hydrants, get all the existing water out of the pipes, not the cans, so that's what Mike's been doing.
Yeah.
Well, and I would think that if, if it was a health concern, DEQ would.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, and they were notified immediately.
But it's out there, so.
Yeah. Um, from my desk, we did a bear. We submitted a grant for uh, the IC. IGBC uh, for some potential funds for a couple of bear events come springtime. Um, hoping that that goes well, wait for that to get back. I am looking at a couple of other grants that were sent to me um, through the Department of Transportation that we may be able to. One of them intrigues me, we had this conversation about the deer, you know, how you get past, you know, animal passage across the highway. Around here, you can't go under the highway because water, going over the highway, you know, would be an interesting challenge, but I, I think.
Because of the water.
I think about, you know, the one north of Missoula there on 93, they've got that crossing there, just the side of Alice Creek on um, 200. Something like that, just as a, you know, a way of helping the, the critters out around town, because we do have an enormous amount of animal strikes in this area. Uh, yes, ma'am?
Uh, there's a NGO in, um, it's run by, named Callian, it's called Gosh, Arc Solutions, I want to say, and um, they specialize in exactly that issue across the whole United States. And there's going to be a whole series of articles that are going to come out in National Geographic about exactly this, where they went across the whole country just to look at, you know, really novel kinds of solutions, the ones that don't require like huge amounts of skin to have an overpass and it's absorbent and no one can afford it. It's like, where are some real solutions and where they could like, so if you get interested in thinking about that and some of these DOT brands, it might be nice to tap on some of the expertise.
Cool, I didn't know that was available, I like that.
Cool, Arc Solutions.
Yeah, and they do think they, they'll come and they'll study all the collisions and where they are, and then they do strategic interventions.
Oh, cool.
Or provide recommendations about who can help, but they, they definitely know what goes on and they work with, um, I think the state of Nevada is considered to be the like the model for the whole country.
They have great.
And then I went outside LA that one, and that's like state of the art and they'll afford it. But it seems like so many people are interested for the same reason, because they, they don't want people to get hurt.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The insurance government tells me.
Yeah.
No, there's not such thing as a cheap deer strike anymore.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
No, uh, Jim Wingeter from Department of Transportation was in my office 10 days ago. We talked about Main Street, it is not on their five year plan. Um, but he's willing to work with us to get it on a plan. We would have to make sure that as we go through this, we'd have to engineer it, Mike and I have talked about it, we're, we're working with Colette as a phase for it. But we would have to go through and put new lines in and those lines have to have a 30 year, water's got to be 25, sewers will be 30 year lifetime expectancy for them to do it. Um, it's a little bit over a mile long, so we're figuring at least two million bucks to do that road, plus there's two sewer crossings down on the south side. That one, we don't think would be too much of an issue, but there's a large line down there that would, that could, we would have to reroute while they were, while they were doing that. Um, if it gets to the point where we don't think we can get that done, he said that they could find money to do an upgrade. They would do a, a grind and overlay. And work with us about some new trees and some streetlights. But I think with infrastructure being as big as it is, still back east, that the federal dollars are going to come through. Then we should be able to get it done, so that's something Colette and I and Michael chat about here in the not too distant future about having a what phase of the current water delivery problem, process we're in and go from there. My, our biggest concern is, once we start this, stormwater. We don't have a stormwater system in the city of Choto, there are storm drains, some drain into sewers, some drain into the little creek that runs by your house. Some drain off of the hill, to join the water that's coming off the hill to take the water to the cemetery, so we could open Pandora's box even more, but I think it's worth a chance of looking at trying to get our Main Street updated. What else do I have? I think that's about it, you guys, I don't have anything else for the good order, how about you in the public? Brian, twiddling your thumbs back there, Colesworthy? Nope, I would tell you, people, you have plenty of time to get to the Choto High School auditorium for Fraser and Haas tonight, courtesy of the Choto Arts, cello and fiddle, I'm surprised they put fiddle in there. Um, and uh, if not, uh, we will meet the week of Thanksgiving on the 21st.
Okay.